Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the order, call to order the joint meeting of the Portsmouth City Council and the Portsmouth School Board. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's Declaration of a State of Emergency Due to the Nova Coronavirus, Executive Order 51 on March 12th, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council, and due to the coronavirus pandemic which is continuing in the Commonwealth, Virginia. This called meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the 22nd day of February, 2021, without a quorum present in the City Council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus in accordance with City Council Ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each council member is participating from their home or other remote location, and I am in the City Council chamber. Madam, could you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Present.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Chairman Patillo, are you with us?
Yes, sir. Thank you again for the invitation to all the members of City Council for this meeting. We're grateful for the opportunity to once again partner with y'all on what's better for our students and staff in the Portsmouth Public School Division. Ms. Chambers, would you like to call the role?
Yes. Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Mrs. Schumay?
She's absent.
All right. Mrs. Thomas?
Present.
Mr. Tillage? Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Reverend Patillo?
Present.
Page number 3.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I have a statement I'd like to make and, and, but before I get to the statement, I want to recognize, take the moment to recognize our newly elected school board members, Ms. Yolanda Edmonds-Thomas, Dr. Ingrid Whitaker, our returning member, and Mr. Vernon Tillage. And also, I want to congratulate those who were reelected. Ms. Lucisha Clu-Atkinson, who is our vice chair, I believe, of the school board, Ms. Sarah Duncan-Hines, and our, our, our school board member who was, who was reappointed, Ms. Costella Williams. Welcome aboard, everyone, and we thank you for participating tonight.
Thank you.
Portsmouth City Council and Portsmouth School Board members, good evening. Anytime that these two bodies can come together to talk about the enrichment of the educational environment in Portsmouth, it is a win for our students, parents, and our city. It also serves to strengthen two of the City Council's four big things, the best pace to live and lifelong learning. So we sincerely appreciate your joining us for this important meeting. Previously, before there was a funding formula, this joint meeting would have been held to give the superintendent an opportunity to present this, the Portsmouth Public Schools Statement of Needs. However, since the funding formula was adopted, our finance department provides the results of the formula to the superintendent or his designate. Today, the results of this calculation has been provided, and it represents an increase in funding to nearly $1 million to the Portsmouth Public Schools for fiscal year 2022. For the benefit of the general public and new members on the City Council and School Board, Ms. Mimi Terry, our chief financial officer, will provide a brief presentation relative to the origins and the particulars of the current funding formula. And the presentation, in the presentation, excuse me, she will entertain any questions that you might have regarding the funding formula. Mr. Place, I believe you have the first presentation?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Portsmouth Public School Board, good evening.
Excuse me, Mr.? Excuse me. Uh, Whitaker?
Just, just for, just for point of order, the, the agenda, the agenda for tonight that was distributed to us was for there to be a presentation from the superintendent on the needs of the schools. And I don't remember seeing anything on the agenda pertaining to us going over the funding formula, because as you know, tomorrow night, we are going to be voting on rescinding the funding formula. So I would think that a discussion on that matter at this time would be really irrelevant because the funding for the 2022 budget for the schools, which is, which is not their issue, that's our issue, that's not going to occur in that manner. And so I would ask that we would adhere to the agenda that was distributed to us, and that is for the council to hear the needs of the superintendent for the upcoming budget.
Thank, thank, thank you, sir, for those comments. And just so everyone is aware, we do have a presentation on schedule on the agenda. The purpose of updating everyone on the funding formula was due to the conversation I had with the chairman of the school board. And when we discussed the funding formula, we both talked about giving both the new council members and the new school board members a basic understanding of how that came to be. Whether or not we decide to go forward with it or we vote to rescind it, that is our matter, sir. But I think part of the reason that we want to ensure that we're working together is so that everyone understands what is before us, past and going forward. Because as, as you indicated, part of the budget that we have today was based on the funding formula.
Well, no, I'm, I'm talking about the budget that we're going to be voting on for the next school year. That's not going to be based on the funding formula because we're voting to rescind it tomorrow. And so my question to my colleagues on council particularly is should we go forward with listening to this presentation? I would rather hear from the superintendent to find out what the needs of the schools are, and then we would move forward as we would with ascertaining whether the budget can support those needs. But I definitely, I'm not interested in hearing about the origins of the funding formula because we know that that was forced upon the school system last, last year. And so I would want to hear from other colleagues in that regard. If the majority wants to go forward with listening to the presentation, then so be it. But that wasn't the expectation that I thought we were coming tonight. I thought it was to hear from the superintendent.
Well, 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 I think, I think it's appropriate what you're saying, Dr. Whitaker. But I also, when you say hear from our colleagues, what, what we're trying to do here, and I understand your position in what you're saying about that was forced upon the school system last year or the school board. I, I, I can remind folks that I was a part of that discussion. And part of my reason for reaching out to the chairman is to allow the chairman and his, his school board to have an understanding and input in the process. We are not going to not have the statement of needs by the superintendent tonight. That is a part. But I think for the public and for everyone else that is involved in this decision, we need to include our partners, the school board, and hear what they have to say.
Right. Well, the public's not involved in, in the funding formula. They weren't involved in putting it together. And I didn't, I didn't realize that the chairman of the school board wanted to have a meeting tonight to discuss the funding formula. That's, that's new.
Sir, we're not having a meeting to discuss the funding formula. That is not what I said. What I said was that we were going to give background of, we weren't discussing the funding formula. We were providing information relative to what it was so that we could at least bring school board members who may not have been privy to that information up to speed on it. Whatever we decide to do as a council as it relates to funding, we certainly can do that. And we will take that matter up tomorrow. But I thought in the interest of building the relationship and having transparency and everybody understanding what was, what had taken place, this would be the appropriate way to move forward.
Well, I think the best way to build a relationship is not to build it on something that the school board didn't agree with last year. I don't think that's the way to build it. Particularly since I said we're going to be rescinding it tomorrow. But like I said, if, if the fellow council members want to.
Well, well, sir, you, you, you assume that we're going to be rescinding it unless you know something I know. We haven't voted on that matter. So I don't, I don't understand how you can say we're rescinding it. There was, there was a motion on the floor to rescind it, but we have not taken a vote on that matter.
Well, I think, I think that if you took the pulse of the council, I think that would be the case, particularly since you also, I thought, voted against it last year.
That, that, that is fine, sir. But, but, but what I'm, what I'm sharing with you is we, we, in an attempt to provide everyone with information, that was what we, we had talked about meeting the chairman of the school.
Right, right.
Mr. Mayor? Can we proceed with the agenda? Proceed with the presentation?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me, can I speak?
I was, I was going to say, if you don't mind, it's, it's, it's some board members that would like to.
I mean, Ms., our chairman has his hand up.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. Chairman, Chairman Patillo, I, I can't see you. I apologize. But, but I see it now with, with your. Go ahead, Chairman Patillo. I, I see your hand now.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make sure we were clear as far as where we stood, as far as I know as a school board in reference to the meeting tonight, and that was for Dr. Brace to present the estimate of needs for the school division for the upcoming school year. I do know that you all have some conversations going on now as far as the funding formula is concerned. And, and when you called me, I made it clear that we're always open to discuss those items. But I also made it clear that that funding formula was done improperly. So I just want to make sure that I was made clear with that. But as far as the meeting, the meeting tonight, the superintendent, he is prepared to present the estimate of needs on behalf of the Portsmouth School Division.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, for sharing that perspective. And so if, if it is the pleasure of, of your school board and the pleasure of council, we, we can proceed certainly with the statement of needs from our superintendent.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Glover, I had my hand up too, Costella.
I, I, I'm sorry, uh, uh, school board member Williams, I, I didn't see your hand. I, I can't see everybody in my screen. So I apologize. It's not done on purpose.
Okay, uh, thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as Chairman Patillo said, our, the school board had the impression that this would be the presentation of the superintendent's needs. And also, my recommendation, thinking back last year with all the acrimony regarding the funding formula, that I had a recommendation that the school board liaisons, I think it's Sarah Duncan-Hines and Mr. Parent, get with, I think it's Dr. Whitaker and Vice Mayor Barnes are the education liaisons, that perhaps they could come together and we start fresh. Because what was presented to us last year was not workable. Even the, the person that the city appointed to represent the city said the formula, the funding formula would lead the city, the schools to mediocrity. And of course, we don't want that for the city or for the schools. So as Dr. Whitaker was saying, uh, we're, I'm recommending that you do vote to do away with that particular funding formula presented to us, and we start fresh. That's the pleasure of the board and the council, to start fresh and do a workable solution. The whole idea of us doing it in the first place was to prevent the tension and the acrimony that we had each year and to give us something to go on. And also, there are other cities that do it, but everyone comes up with the formula that they want. And the one that was presented for Portsmouth Public Schools was not workable. So, um, I, I'm, I'm a board member here to hear the superintendent's needs and to have a discussion with our fellow council people, but not. The funding formula needs a lot of work, and it, it was one-sided. We asked back then that we could speak before they voted on it, and we were denied that. So, and in the beginning, we were told that everyone would come together to discuss it and agree upon the outcome. And that did not take place. So I think we need to go from ground zero because you, you opened the meeting saying that the funding formula was giving us, I think, a million dollars or whatever. So that, to me, that, that's not even, uh, should not even be on the table if, if we are not in agreement. If you want to start off fresh and you want us to come together, then we have to work together to have a solution that works for the council as well as the school board, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, school board member, Costella Williams. And I think those words were very appropriate and timely, and I agree with, I agree with you wholeheartedly. The way to start forward is, is for all of us to come together, City Council and the school board for a workable solution that can meet all of our needs. So I agree with you, man. Mr. Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Last year, when we discussed the fund, funding formula, I pleaded to the school board members and the council members. I made them all aware that this was a subjective process and that with math, we can manipulate numbers to, and design them to do anything we wanted. And I made them aware that it wasn't a fair process. So I'd like to thank both parties for, you know, joining me a year later. It's very refreshing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And so with that being said, we will move forward. Um, Mr. Chairman, if you could please ask the superintendent to come forward with his presentation. Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor City Council. I'm going to ask Dr. Brace and his team to come forward now to present the estimate of needs for the 2020, 2021 school year. Dr. Brace?
Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair. Patillo, can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, and members of the City Council, school board members as well. Tonight is my honor to bring forward for your consideration my superintendent estimate of needs for the fiscal year 2021-22, as well as an update on our capital improvement program. As always, we're optimistic for our continued partnership to help best support the children of this city to receive the greatest educational experiences possible. As we begin, I want to turn to our CFO, Mr. Paul, who will walk us through the first slides of our presentation on how we develop our budget.
Next slide. Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of the City Council, members of the school board. While council is very well appointed with how the budget is instructed, I did want to reiterate that the heart of the school division budget is a general fund, which shapes the balance between the revenues and expenditures involved in our day-to-day operations of the schools. As you can see, this is the largest part of our budget proposal, that's 76%. The remaining 24% is split between four areas: risk management, the grants fund, cafeteria fund, and the textbook fund. Next slide, please. In this slide, you will see that the total of all funds is approximately $216.6 million. It is comprised of those five funds that I just spoke of in the last slide. But for the rest of this presentation, we'll address the general fund only as that is the fund where most of our flexibility lies. But we felt important, felt it important for you to see the fiscal year budget proposal in its entirety for all the funds that we manage. Next slide, please. Looking at this year, the FY 21-22 budget, if you notice, it is approximately $165.5 million, which is a increase of $5.5 million over the FY 20-21 budget. This proposal includes initiatives that were identified by the school board, our staff, and the community as priorities. These priorities are an employee salary increase, additional instructional positions to enhance student achievement, and a continued focus on student support without returning to in-person learning. We will also look to add to our information, information and instructional technology teams to support those numerous items of technology that we added over the last year due to COVID-19. And then in addition, we included funds to continue to enhance other instructional programs as well as the technology to support those as well. Next slide. This slide goes into our total budget revenue sources. As a reminder, the largest part of our funding comes from state school funds and sales tax funds. Our average daily membership is projected to decrease next year to approximately 12,794 students. And that's K-12, that's our K-12 membership, which is a decrease of about 383 students from the FY 20-21 ADM, the original ADM of 13,177. Uh, because our state funds are based on ADM, this is important because a decrease in ADM usually results in a decrease from state funding. So with our revenue outlook, you will see that our state, our funding is projected to go up about $2.1 million. Why you ask? Well, for three basic reasons. One, there's a $1.3 million increase in our at-risk funding for students who are determined to be educationally at risk. Basically, this is based upon the number of free and reduced lunch participants in the school division. The second reason is state funding for a state share of a 2% bonus funded for funded standards of quality or SOQ instructional and support positions beginning on September 1st, 2021. That amount totals $1.1 million. And I'll say this budget is based on the governor's introduced budget back in December. So these were all these numbers are coming from. And then lastly, the state did give us a beneficial slice of information. They, due to the pandemic, school divisions across this Commonwealth experienced decreases in enrollment, and PPS was not immune to that. And so therefore, the state included what they called no-loss funding in this budget that essentially holds all school divisions across the Commonwealth armless for the losses that happened in enrollment that happened in 2021. To make that claim, the total no-loss revenue for Portsmouth Public Schools for FY 21-22 is projected to be $1.7 million. What that means in layman's terms is that without that funding, we would have been short in state funding by about $1.7 million because of enrollment losses. As, as, as we discussed earlier, this is the first year of the implementation, implementation of the local revenue allocation policy, better known as the funding formula. As was stated, we, we would see an increase of $929,268 in this next fiscal year's budget. With that, we would be looking at a total revenue increase of $3.1 million with state and local revenue increases. And our total budget would be, which is on the screen, $163.1 million, as outlined here. Even with all that increased state and local revenue, we would still need additional revenue to fully fund all our initiatives in this budget. As this current proposal is not enough to cover all the initiatives, we would be looking to ask for additional city revenue of approximately $2.5 million to address the needs that we will discuss in the rest of this presentation. Next slide, please. Compensating our employees. Our first priority is a familiar one, employee compensation. In addition to the board priorities, employee compensation was also named as a top priority according to the results of our 2021 budget survey that was sent out to the community. As I stated, the governor's proposed binding of budget for FY 2022 includes currently a 2% bonus for all SOQ-funded positions. However, let me be very clear, the state is only providing funds for a 2% bonus, not a permanent salary increase. So there's no state funding for that salary increase at this time. That said, the importance of providing our employees with salary increase cannot be understated. We must remain competitive in the employee, employment marketplace, as, as all businesses do, as well as, and with teacher shortage being a nationwide problem, providing a competitive wage for instructional staff and all the rest of our staff is vital to the continued success of our division. Therefore, our proposal tonight underscores our commitment to ensuring that our current and our future employees are compensated for their hard work and dedication to the educational success of our student body and the community as a whole. Next slide, please. To, to reiterate, the governor's proposed budget includes funding for a 2% bonus, which would be effective on September 1st, 2021. State funding is only for those SOQ positions. They do not fund every position in this school division. They fund only those that they have established in SOQ. So we would have to find money to support a salary increase for the rest of our employees. With the feedback that we received from our community in our budget survey and from school board members, they all exhibited a strong desire to provide all PPS employees with a raise. And therefore, we put, um, included a 2% raise in this budget proposal. As a result, that raise, the total amount and cost of that raise would be $3 million. Next slide, please. We've also added, in addition to staff raise, other initiatives in this budget. About $2.2 million of initiatives that are designed to enhance our instructional programs, our student supports, our administration and operational areas, as well as information technology. The total of those additions are about $2.2 million. On the next slides, we will give you details on what is included in each area and why they're so vital to the school division's well-being. Next slide, please. In the instructional category, we added the following positions to support instructional excellence in Portsmouth Public Schools. First, the governor's proposed budget provided additional SOQ funding for school counselors. The state is at, within a multi-year proposal process to raise ratios for counselor, the student to counselor ratio from three to 325 to one. So therefore, we would have to add four elementary counselors and one high school counselors to adhere to that proposal from the governor. Secondly, we want to add four middle school music teachers. Currently, the high school music teachers assist the middle school schools in providing music instruction. So they go from school to school to do that. Next, a testing supervisor. Obviously, as we come back in, in, in school, going back fully in school, we obviously need to manage the assessments and, and ensure that we can look at our learning gaps and make sure that we can meet the needs of those students once they come back to the school division. And then lastly, we're, we're looking at adding a CTE teacher that will focus on instruction for a new public safety course that we want to develop in conjunction with our local agencies. The position will instruct students in the areas of police and fire fundamentals. And we intend this program to assist our city in developing a pipeline of new recruits to their police and fire departments. Next slide, please. Continuing with instructional additions, we're also adding an online learning specialist to support our virtual learning platforms. Also, two ELL, which is, which are English language learners for those students who do not speak English as their primary language, to assist our growing ELL population, as well as an executive principal for elementary schools that will serve as an instructional resource for all of our instruction, elementary schools, excuse me, and support elementary principals in the delivery of curriculum, as well as ensuring that all elementary students receive. as well as ensuring that all elementary students receive the teaching resources and support necessary to be able uh to progress uh further in their educational career. And then lastly, we're, we're looking to um add a someone to help with early college, first college, CTE, and AP, AP courses as well within that executive principal. Uh, and then finally, in instruction, we're gonna have an inclusion of funds to assist Churchland Elementary, which is our only non-title one school, just with some support for summer school and remediation activities. In total, all of these additions will uh cost approximately nine hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. Next slide, please. In the area of student support services, as we all know, these are critical to the success of many of our students and their families. Therefore, we've included the following student areas where we can provide additional assistance to our students and, and their families to assist them in their educational goals. First, uh, we want to add two OTPT specialists. Currently, we utilize outside contractors to provide OTPT services in some cases. We propose to hire two OTPT therapists to decrease our dependence on outside contract, contracted labor and to assist our families in developing better long-term relationships with, with uh students and their families. Secondly, we wanted to add funding to support the second year of a three-year plan to provide equity adjustments for some of our nurses that was first presented in two thousand nineteen. This will allow our school nurses to attain equity with their peers. And lastly, in this area, we have some other adjustments for student support positions that include extension of contracts to provide better service during summer months. Some of those areas include reviewing of immunization records, health physicals reviews, and mandated specialty testing and screening that are required during the summer. In total, these stu- additions to student support will cost about two hundred and four thousand dollars. Next slide. In the area of administration and operation, there are vital components to succe- to success of a school division. With that in mind, we propose the following personnel additions in this category. First, a supervisor of gifted and dual enrollment uh programs. This position would take on the role of managing our gifted program and also be the primary point of contact for our dual enrollment programs with TCC, first college, early college, and any dual enrollment courses that we have for our students. Secondly, uh, school divisions across the Commonwealth have already or currently implemented uh and the addition of an equity officer. And so therefore, we wanted to do the same thing to assist us in evaluating and addressing equity across all of our K twelve instructional programs. And then lastly, we have three additional programs to support schools and school operations, a human resources organizational specialist, a lead multimedia specialist, and a bus driver. And the total for all of these additions is three hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. Next slide. Lastly, in the area of staff additions and information technology, obviously, information technology has been of vital importance in the past and now even more so in the school division's life cycle. This is an understatement with what, what, what we had to deal with with COVID nineteen and the adjustments that not only school division staff, but also students, their parents and the community as a whole has had to make. So therefore, to support that area, we propose the following additions. One, five technology resource teachers or TRTs. TRTs support technology within our school buildings and they support classroom teachers. Uh, we also look to provide four technology support technicians to provide support for technology-related issues across the entire school division from the information technology department. They would be people that parents would talk to as they're trying to work out details and, and, and problems with the technology while they're online or trying to do online lessons. Um, next, an enterprise data administrator that controls munis. That is our system and the city system for finance, human resources, and other functions. Currently, we rely on the city's database administrator to assist with those functions. We wanted to put in an in-house resource to ensure that we were proactive just in case the need arise that we needed additional help with our systems. Um, and then lastly, we're, finally, we're implementing schedule changes that will provide additional resources in the summer months to assist with preparing our schools uh to open in the fall in the information technology area. Uh, these additions co- would cost approximately six hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Our, our budget also includes uh additional recommended budgeted initiatives that we consider critical to the operation of the school division. Many of these initiatives are continuation of programs that are already in place that we participated in, and some are new initiatives based on changes in our current operations. Uh, the first one is funding for hardware and software to support technology within our classrooms. Obviously, this is important uh to ensure that all our students and staff have access to the current technology resources to enhance and make the learning environment more engaging. This includes the purchase of new Chromebooks and iPads for students, the purchase of new laptop carts uh for classroom use, replacement of classroom projection systems, and other technology initiatives. Uh, secondly, we want to continue the support and expansion of dual enrollment, first college, early college programs in collaboration with TCC. Uh, third, uh, CSEP is, is our regional special ed school. And usually, each year, we have increases in tuition based on the service cost to provide uh services to that population. And therefore, we included increases in that to keep up with the rising cost of providing those services. Uh, fourth, funding for professional development and staff training so that our staff can be well-trained and familiar with the latest educational strategies to foster student success. Next slide. As, as we go into coming back into a school platform, coming back into in-person learning, social, emotional learning, and mental health are a priority for our school board and our community as a whole. So we propose to add funds that will allow us to procure contractors that can provide services to pr- support our student body. We're determined that those contracted services may be the best route to take since we will need to identify those needs that are most critical when we return to in-person learning and then tailor the services and solutions to fit those needs the best way. Um, these next two, fleet management and ground maintenance. As many of you might know, we met with the city back in the fall of two thousand twenty and discussed the city's desire to discontinue providing fleet management and grounds maintenance services to PPS as of June thirty of twenty twenty one. Therefore, this change requires an increase in our budget so that we can continue to ensure that our fleet is well-maintained and available to provide services to our students and staff. Also, to ensure that our grounds are writing to visitors and, and to our student body and staff as a whole. We're currently planning for this transition in conjunction with the city and exploring options as it relates to procuring outside vendors to provide fleet management and grounds maintenance services. And then lastly, an increase in general fund transfers to cover allocated risk management expenditures uh for the school division. Next slide, please. So, so to recap and summarize, we're expecting proposed revenues of approximately a hundred and sixty three million dollars. Our total expenditures are expected to be about a hundred and sixty five point five billion dollars. As a result, we're, we're asking and will request additional funding of approximately two point five million dollars from, from the city. This request represents the needs of our school division. And we would be remiss if we did not request what was needed to provide a high-quality and world-class education for the students of the city of Portland. We cannot fall behind our peers, and we must continue to provide adequate resources to the students, staff, and community as a whole. And with that, I'll turn this presentation over to Dr. Bracy.
Next, next slide, please. Thank you, Mr. Falk. That marks the end of our presentation for the operating budget. We want to take a few minutes now to update the council on the current state of our capital improvement program, our CIP. Next slide, please. As there are new members on council this year, by way of introduction to this topic across the nation, school, school construction and renovation needs are one of the leading demands on school divisions. Given the size and scope of the individual projects, it's not unusual to see CIP plans in the hundreds of millions of dollars in need. That is why purposeful and strategic thinking around the CIP is vital in our continued partnership. Today, I will walk you through the projects still listed on our CIP and share the division's goals for these projects. Next slide. First, the most pressing need is the, is new construction specifically for a new middle school. The construction of a new K eight middle school has been the most prominent item in our discussions in the past years. This should, this, this schools would, uh, would only, would not only address the critical need in our rezoning efforts in the overcrowded middle schools, but it also will allow us to move the sixth graders across the division into the middle school level. Right now, as you all probably know, middle school grades are consisted of seven and eight. Previously, we determined that the new school will be built on the site on Willett Drive. With this middle school facility, we will be able to house students from Churchland Elementary School, which is another facility in dire need of replacement. Right now, based on current market comparisons, it's estimated the school will cost roughly fifty million dollars. Next slide. In addition to this middle school, Churchland Middle School also needs replacing. Churchland was built in nineteen sixty eight, making it more than sixty years old. This three-story school building has the variety of accessibility issues that are not in alignment with requirements from the American Disabilities Act. In addition, this antiquated layout and design of the school severely limited the instructional offerings and new teaching models available to students. It is again estimated that the cost of this project would be roughly fifty million dollars. And this, this particular project, these two schools is nothing new to some of the council members because we, maybe two, three years ago when we had our joint meeting, we also established a tour of Churchland Elementary and Churchland Middle School at that time so that you all could see firsthand the conditions of those two buildings. And following that, there was money at one point in the, in the CIP that called for the architectural design and planning phase. But when we got to the, the year that that was to be implemented, that, that disappeared. So we wanted to bring this back because it's still a need on our end. Next slide. Those are the two largest ticket items in our CIP. However, as you know, the day-to-day maintenance of our schools are always ongoing efforts and require more immediate turnaround in order to provide safe working and learning environments for students and staff. These needs, which are listed in no order of priority. Window replacement at Waters, Waters Middle School. Waters was constructed in nineteen sixty six, and the windows have exceeded their life expectancy. Approximate costs are seven hundred and fifty thousand pending architect, design, and construction costs. Roof replacements at James Hurst Elementary School and Ja- and John Tyler Elementary School. James Hurst was constructed in nineteen seventy eight and still has its current roof. John Tyler, which is a newer building constructed in two thousand and three, but its roof requires multiple repairs. So those costs approximately are one point six million. Tennis court replacements at AC Norcom and Churchland High School. Current court conditions have deteriorated to render them unusable, both in competition and in physical education classes. Approximate costs are three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Athletic complexes at, at the high schools. The s- the stadium complexes at all of our high schools are in very need of repair, including new stadium fieldhouses for teams with locker room facilities and with new stadium lighting. Just to make sure that you understand that, wh- when we talk about fieldhouses currently, and when we have halftime at football games or soccer games on our athletic fields, there is not, there's not a fieldhouse that they can go in and change or even during the halftime. They have to travel to the gyms, which is sometimes about a five-minute or so walk when you have a, a dedicated time period for the halftime, whether that's ten or fifteen minutes. So what that will do, it would help eliminate the, the travel and also as far as it'll be more feasible for them to be able to leave the field and enter right into a facility as many other school divisions in our area have. City administration also requested that at least one of our schools have a synthetic turf field to allow for regional competitions as well as potential city events. City administrator, administration designated AC Norcom to receive this turf field. Approximate cost is six million dollars. Lighting upgrades to Churchland High School baseball and softball complex. Currently, there, there are aged lights at the boys' baseball field and no lighting at the girls' softball field. Approximate cost for that will be around six hundred thousand dollars. Next slide. HVAC upgrade at James Hurst Elementary. The chiller in the HVAC at James Hurst is no longer manufactured and, and parts are not supported. Additionally, there are still some significant portions of the system that were not upgraded during the last renovation, including the office, cafeteria, library, along with the second floor. This costs is approximately six hundred thousand dollars. Gym construction at Lakeview Elementary School. Lakeview currently does not have a, a gymnasium space for the students and staff to utilize. The approximate costs are between four and five million dollars. Restroom renovation at AC Norcom High School, Churchland High School, Craddock Mill, and Waters Mill. The current multi-use facilities are in need of renovation due to accessibility, efficiency, and aesthetics. All multi-use restrooms at the schools would need complete upgrades, and this will cost approximately five million dollars. Auditorium renovation at AC Norcom. The Norcom stage is aged and equipment plate performances and events that are held. Stage equipment replacements, curtain, and carpet replacements are necessary. The approximate cost is around seven hundred and fifty thousand. We also, next slide. We also have several future projects that are in need of further discussion with council. As you know, the school division has buildings that can be put to better use in our organization, but you do this and require major renovation work. For example, S.A.'s Clark has had numerous offices relocated, relocated to their site in the past decade, which has created demands on the building and specifically its HVAC unit. That, that is something that was not factored into the original equipment when it was installed. The facility is in need of a new HVAC survey to determine what is needed to accommodate the staff currently working at Clark. The DAT building, which is currently, which currently sits adjacent to our instructional resource center, does not house employees and it is used mainly for storage at the moment. However, the building could be used for administrative offices, special events, or meeting space if considerable amount of work went in there. Again, that includes HVAC system and other renovations. Next slide. I do want to thank council for its continued support of our CIP program. We're either currently in, in the work or in the design phase with the following six major projects. Churchland High School auditorium renovation is currently underway. Restroom upgrades at Churchland Middle School and Wilson High School. Parking lot addition at Churchland Academy. Bus loop addition at Mount Herman Freed School Center. Cooling tower and electrical switchgear upgrades at Wilson High School. HVAC rooftop replacement at Hodges Mountain Elementary School. Next slide. As I conclude tonight, let me thank our incredible budget team led by Mr. Falk for all their efforts in bringing this presentation to you. I'm immensely proud of the forward-thinking and proactive approaches this proposed budget represents. I also fully believe that every inclusion in this budget points to the success seen in this photo here. It provides the support to ensure that every one of our students crosses his or her stage at graduation, ready, prepared, to take on the future ahead of them. Tonight with me, I have, of course, our C, our CFO, Mr. Theo Falk, as well as our Director of Auxiliary Services, Dr. Jerry Simmons, and our contract, and our Contract Project Manager, Mr. Tom Marsh. And we'll be happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Bracy, so much for that comprehensive presentation. And thank you and your team, uh, Mr. Falk and, and, and everyone included for, for the in-depth work that you all have put into this. And, and I want to speak on behalf, not, not on behalf of my colleagues, but, but for me personally. I have indicated and I have said that, um, if we want our school system to be a top-performing school system and, and we want to make sure that that happens. and, and we want to make sure that that happens, we have to certainly support them in that effort. And I intend to do that to the best of my ability. As I said, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I am sure that many of them feel the same. So with that, um, the floor is open for questions, uh, from members of council. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor. You're muted, sir.
Uh, yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, uh, Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk for the presentation. I did have a question just to make sure, uh, I'm clear as I, uh, move forward and looking at the data. Uh, on your presentation, I believe it's page eight of the presentation where it lists the other initiatives, uh, that are included that comes to the two point, um, one million dollars. And then the total request of the two point four seven four million. That difference, uh, is made up of these other recommended budget initiatives. Is that correct? We get from the two point one to the two point four with these, um, other recommended budget initiatives. Am I following your data correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On slide eight, yeah, that's it. Those initiatives right there were, were for two point one.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that added into the, into the, the two-hour request with the revenues and expenditures.
Right. And so on page fourteen, I guess it's page fourteen and fifteen, uh, the other recommended budget initiatives, that's what gets us to the, uh, final figure request of the two point four seven four.
Um, that is part of, Dr. Whitaker, primarily it is the salary increase. It, uh, the, the state budget as it's constructed right now by the governor gives us about one point one million dollars for revenue for the, for the bonus, because they put a bonus in. Our salary increase cost about three million dollars. So that's one point nine million dollars of the two point five million that we had asked for from the city. The remaining six hundred thousand is a part of these other recommended budget initiatives.
Okay, okay. All right, all right. Well, uh, thank you, and, um, I certainly too, um, am in the notion of making sure that our schools are fully funded, and so I th- thank you for the information.
Vice Mayor Barnes, did you have your hand up, sir? I, I, I thought I saw your hand earlier.
Yes, sir.
Go, go, go ahead, sir. You have the floor.
Uh, thank you guys again for the presentation. I, I wanted to ask a question. I, I've, I've been following the General Assembly and I, I know the House asking for five percent raises for teachers and, and the Senate is asking for a three percent raise. If that was to pass somewhere in, in, in between, how would that affect you guys?
Well, it would, right now, we don't know because they have not put out detailed, uh, revenue estimates for how that's going to work in their budget, because it's not just salary increases. There's also other initiatives that will affect things in the budget. So that's why we cannot determine right now what that's going to mean. However, anytime the state puts a raise in a budget, you're going to be short because you, you, it's based on SOQ-funded positions only. They're giving us raised money for whatever positions they deem that are SOQ-funded. However, we all know SOQ is the minimum standard, and if you funded schools at the minimum standard, we wouldn't have a principal in every school, we would not have a nurse in every school, as so many different positions that would not even be funded by the state because they're unfunded mandates. And so we can't give a, a, a number to it, but I will tell you that if, if that raise would go into this budget, there would be additional funding that we would need to support it for our, our, uh, employees.
Okay, um, I, I saw that you guys were asking for more, a little bit more money regarding the tuition for TCC early college, first college and dual enrollment. Who and what does that cover?
Yeah, that, that covers the, the tuition as well as the, the textbook and materials for the students that are enrolled in those programs. We keep our costs down to a bare minimum for our students, so we use those funds to help offset those costs for them to encourage them to take these programs and dual enrollment and so forth. So that's why, and, and the board has always asked us, as you know, Mr. Barnes, to increase the number of students that we have in those programs. So in order to do that, we need the additional funding to make that happen.
Okay. Uh, and, and I'm, I, I have a lot of questions, but I'm a year after this. Um, I, the, the decrease in kids in the school system, can, can you explain that a little bit? Because I know sometimes some of my colleagues think that that means that it, it goes to particularly the one grade or one school, but can you explain that to us a little bit?
Yes, sir. So when you, when you hear, uh, and, and we've talked about this, when they say, you hear some, some people say that, well, you're down, uh, you're down thirty students, you're down fifty students or a hundred students. And immediately they think that there needs to be a, a decrease in the number of teachers and staff that you have, which is not the case because those one hundred students are not in one particular school and they're not in one particular grade. So if they're spread across the school division, there may not be a net effect of you losing a teacher. You still will need that, that, those teachers based on the student-teacher ratio. So that's why it's important for everyone to know that when you hear of the decreases, it's not central to one particular school or one particular class. So that's very good, very good question, Mr. Barnes.
And, and it's alleviating some of the overcrowdedness in some of these classrooms as well, too.
Right. That, that, when that happens, it does keep, keep us within the student-teacher ratio that's required by state.
Thank you.
Councilman, Council, Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor. You're muted, sir. Thank you.
I'm in. Am I good? I'm good?
You have the floor, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do have a question. I jotted down some notes here. Um, I worked with some of these teachers for five-plus years in the Portsmouth Public School System. Uh, they contact me now. Um, I built a, a working relationship with some of these teachers, and I feel like they're very pivotal to our, um, education system. Uh, they are great pillars, and we must continue to make this education system stronger. Now, I think they have a lot of concern that, that I've been hearing, like I said before I got in office and, uh, while I'm in office, about neighboring cities and the systems that they've been putting together to, to retain their talent. Uh, I think me and the mayor has talked before about retaining talent here in Portsmouth. And I think we must be doing everything we can to keep our teachers in place. Now, I've been hearing a lot about a step system. I, 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 I think that's based off, uh, 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 raises in, uh, salary elevation. But from your presentation, Dr. Bracy and CFO Falk, I seen you guys are incorporating a two percent bonus September the first. But the thing is, the teachers been telling me that once that money comes September the first, it's pretty much allocated. But what do we have to do to look more into step raises with our teachers?
Uh, Councilman Wood, that is something that the board had actually, um, had talked about during this, um, this, um, planning year with the, with the budget. Is that we're, we're looking, of course, to give the two percent this year, but in going forward, we do have a concern about the compression, um, of our salary, um, scale. And with that being said, one of the things that we know we have to do, we, we're, we're going to look at during the, the course of the next school year, is to get a consultant to come in and do a salary study for us. And what happens when, when they, when someone comes in and provides that information for you, the bottom line is it's going to take money to break up that compression. And once we, once we have that, then we'll know what that figure is to start looking at step increases. So after that's done, we'll come back and then we'll have the conversation. That's something that lia- the liaisons can talk about in some of their meetings. But because it's going to be a, a real number tied to that, you know, it, it up into the million, because that's, that's just where we are. If you think of it from the standpoint that we're talking, uh, a two percent raise and we're looking at two point, two point four, two point five million in needs, then compression study is even going to separate that even more. So it's going to be more funds that's going to be needed to allocate for that particular purpose. But that's something that we will get done, uh, next, next school year. We'll do an RFP for that, and we're going to bring that study back and share it with council, because we have to share it with council because we have no way of, of increasing our own budget to be able to make that happen. So that is something that you will see, um, coming soon. And as I said, the liaisons will be speaking when we meet, when they meet, to try to find out where we are and the steps that we're taking to make that happen.
And, and let me, let me chime in, uh, Mr. Woodard. We included a two percent salary increase in our budget.
Okay.
The governor put in revenue for the two percent bonus, but we felt like that wasn't enough for our employees. So there is a two percent salary increase in this budget proposal.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you, you, ma'am, you, you have your hand up?
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, thank you, Dr. Bracy and Mr. Falk for the presentation. It is enlightening to, uh, see how the funds are being allocated. Uh, my question is along the line of the, the governor's proposed budget, uh, the biennium budget of the two percent that, um, Mr. Woodard, uh, just spoke on, uh, for September first, that, that does not include the SOQ, uh, positions that are there. Uh, and you say that you need two point two million in the total additions. Uh, so does that cover, uh, the other positions that are, are not funded there?
So the, the raise that we're putting in is for all PPS employees. The, the governor and the state, when they give you revenue, they only give you revenue for those SOQ instructional, that's support positions. Our proposal is to give a two percent raise to all employees.
Okay, okay. Come back.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, Council, Council, Councilman Battle, you have the floor, sir.
Yes. So, sir, you're saying that the state is giving you a one-time two percent stipend. And you're saying you're requesting a three, a two percent budget increase. And you're saying that our portion this year will be one point nine million, indicating that from the years ongoing, that it would be three million.
Okay.
If we are, if we are to maintain that two percent.
Let me, let me reiterate. Let me make sure I understand. So the, the, the governor's proposal would give us one point one million dollars in revenue for a bonus, which would be a one-time revenue for bonus, Mr. Battle, if I understand where you're going. Uh, the, the, a two percent raise for us will cost three million dollars. So that would be a difference of one point nine million and what it would cost us versus the funding that the governor has put in his budget. So that is correct, sir.
Oh, thank you. That, let me say that I've always been committed to the financing of the school board. And I will do my best to accommodate the requests. And I'm sure in a negotiated process, we'll come to a happy medium. But we also have to, we have a city to run, and, and we have to make sure that we're, uh, handling our finances properly as not to throw our city out of whack and to not meet the needs of the other obligations in the city. However, there are places that we can grab unencumbered funds and possibly get to where you want to go, and I will be committed to making sure that all my efforts will be in meeting that obligation. Thank you.
Are there any other council members that, that, that have a question, uh, for either our superintendent or his team? Is it, um, or Councilwoman Lucas Burke, or do you have another question, ma'am?
No, sir.
Um, Vice Mayor Barnes, you have a question, sir?
Yes, um, the, the six million that you guys asked for in the CIP, uh, regarding the fieldhouse and the field, was that, was that all together for the fieldhouse and turf field that you were, um, recommending?
That's, uh, complexes and the fields. Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, just, just to my colleagues, um, if, if you guys don't know, um, having a turf field would be very beneficial to the city of Portsmouth as someone who's in a, a youth league. Um, it, it, there's a lot of revenue to be made when it comes to actually having that type of field and a lot of money that the school system can make that would also, um, benefit them from, well, actually stop them from probably coming and asking us for certain funds, because they can get it through that. Um, so I, I'm definitely in favor of you guys doing that, and also the, the middle school that you guys are asking for. I'm definitely in favor that as somebody who was on the school system, I mean, on the school board, I actually was able to visit, um, all of our schools. And when you go to the schools, they're, they're overcrowded. Um, you have kids sitting in the, um, the broom closet in the hallway doing work. And to me, the mayor, you know, he said, we wanted to make this a best, a best, the best place to live and a lifelong learning. In order to do that, we have to make sure that we fully fund education. Not just meet our budget needs like we have in the past, but we need to fully fund education to the effect that they don't have to cut services for our children, because our kids deserve that. So, you know, I just want to make sure to let you guys know that I'm in support of what you guys are trying to do, and I'm definitely in support of our children, especially since I have children in Portsmouth Public School System. So, you know, what's best for them is also what's best for everybody else.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, are, are there any other questions from my council colleagues? Councilmember, member Woodard? Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Uh, well, just to piggyback off of what Vice Mayor Barnes said, I, I, I think that'd be a wonderful idea for us to go ahead and invest, uh, you know, see if we can get the ball rolling with a turf field, um, you know, at the Norcom location. As, as me and the mayor talk, uh, Mayor Glover talk about, uh, different projects that you see that's happening on the other side of Effingham that's, um, distributed around High Street. Uh, I think it'd be an, a, a important piece to, uh, that, that street. You know, you, as you guys can see right now, we got different, uh, builders coming up, and we do have some plans for, um, new developments, and I, I think that'd be a, a great attraction for, for people to come here, you know, um. It's, just hosting events alone is a different industry, and we need to really look into that. We got to find new ways to make money. Um, you know, I know we got some things on the board right now, but we got to keep on adding different projects and different strategies so we can, um, move this city forward. But, uh, I do have a question for Dr. Bracy and, uh, CFO Falk. I, I, I want to know a little bit more about the, how we, how we conduct the process between the city and the schools, uh, CIP funding. Well, now, I, I really want to know about that, and, and I know you guys are getting, getting funded. So are you allocating these money to the projects that, um, that are probably going to be more important to the city?
Okay. Mr. Woodard, uh, I think, Mr. Falk and I are going, we're going to tag team on, on your, on your question.
Okay.
And, um, I think the, the first thing is with the, the CIP. Now, we, we, we sit down and we outline the, the projects that we have, uh, for our capital improvement projects. And then that's submitted to the city. And then what they usually do, they, they, they tell us which projects will go forward. So if you're asking, um, how do we plan for that? We sort of, we put the, the initiatives out there, and then we wait to see what the funding source looks like, what the amount of funding we will receive. Then that, and then they outline- Then that and then they outline the projects that we will, that will that will that will move forward. Now, that varies from year to year. You probably heard me mention earlier in the presentation that at one point in time, uh within the last three years, the new school construction was included in the CIP. It it was even budgeted for uh one year, they were going to start the 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 architect uh and design phase of the building, but then when we got to that, that disappeared. So we don't know why. We think it we were just told that that wouldn't happen at this time. So we don't.
I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt you. So if it disappeared, is is the money still being uh counted for? Is it still available? Is you you know, I I I mean, we we already talking about us needing another school. I think Vice Mayor Barnes just mentioned that. He also mentioned in his Facebook Live. So is these money still available so we can get started on a new school? I mean, I mean.
The Mr. Woodard, the the money for the CIP plan, the school division does not manage the the money or the CIP projects for the most part. They're handled by the city on the city side, so the money never changes hands to the school division. The money sits on the city side and they manage the the funding as well as the projects that go forward. So a question about where money might have gone to maybe better serve the city staff than us because we just, we work alongside them to manage those projects to make sure that they work within the school, but when it comes to the administration of that, that's not on the city side.
Okay, well, um, Dr. Bracy, I also heard you said uh with the projects that are on your table, whatnot, um, what 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 do we need to help you guys plan accordingly throughout the year? You know, I I I, like I said, I know some things are um, you know, the city require, but what do we need to do for you guys to help you guys plan accordingly?
I think um what will what will help us is a, I guess, a a more in-depth conversation with the between the city and schools, um CIP staff. And I guess with Mr. Falk, the from the from the schools and the city finance. So we'll know exactly if it's in the CIP, then we'll know that it'll be there and it will remain there. I think we need some consistency along the lines there. Because when we have items that are scheduled and then they then the the plan is changed, it's not because we've changed, it's it's because it's changed um at the city's request. So if we could get together and get some consistency there, I think that will that will be beneficial to both sides. And that way we will know exactly what what to plan for as we move forward with the CIP.
And if I if if I may, sir, um to to add to that, um one of the things that that I know the interim city manager and I have discussed and where he'll probably be talking to the liaisons to the school board about having updating on on those particular items and and going forward, having a work um and and providing input that that everyone will know exactly where those items stand as it relates to going forward. So I think that will be forthcoming and I think your question was very timely.
Uh, Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, one one final question. Um, there was a mention about the fleet um that the city used to manage on behalf of the the school board. And now you're taking that on and and I know that our cost was one cost and that your cost um is different. Can you can you go over those uh figures again one more time for me?
Yes, ma'am. Well, we're we're looking at moving from and and just for everybody's benefit. The city has provided fleet management as well as pay for the grounds maintenance for the schools uh in the past. So with fleet management, it was internal, your internal staff would fix our buses, our white fleet, so on and so forth. Uh and they would pay for the grounds maintenance at the schools. We've had a couple of meetings to discuss that and it's the pleasure of the city to move that to the school division. Obviously, we don't have a staff to do it. We don't have facilities to do it. So we're going to have to go out on the open market, put out an RFP to find a company that can do that. And my gut feeling is it's going to be a little more costly than having the city to do that. So therefore, we added money to this budget to try to prepare for what may be an increase in cost. Because we 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 really don't have any vantage point. Uh I don't know of any school division in this area as well as probably in this probably up to Richmond that that outsources its fleet management. And so we don't have a vantage point to know what it's going to cost until we get proposals back, so on and so. So that's kind of where we are with this. We just want to make sure that we have enough to cover it. Because obviously that's very important as we try to transport students and with our maintenance vehicles, so on and so forth, each and every day.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Battle, sir, you you have the floor.
I have a couple of questions. Um the first question is, did we get back with the city uh to see if the uh city garage uh could take that task back? And um expand this operation to handle the the um service to fleet?
Uh, we we were told that they were they were willing to let us outsource that and that was not something that they wanted to take on going forward. Uh obviously, if there's a a difference or a change, we could talk through that, but right now we we've been told that they're not looking to move move forward with that service.
Well, i- if that's economically feasible, uh that might be something that we could do and we could possibly give those funds that we would uh spend above that to the school board for uh to help fund the budget. Uh, number two, um uh Churchland High School has the ability to handle basketball scholarship, I mean, uh championship playoffs. Um, Wilson High School or Manor High School has the ability to handle the track playoffs. And Mr. Barnes is exactly right. If we build a field house at Norcom, we'll be able to handle the football playoffs, which is an awful lot of revenue. So um I'd like to uh, you know, request that we uh seriously take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Battle. I I I I do have a couple of questions myself if if uh superintendent is willing to entertain me tonight. Dr. Bracy, you know, in 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 light of what's going on with the pandemic, um you all, your staff, the school board, everyone has done a phenomenal job. I I I'd like to hear from you. What what is the state of our schools right now in terms of how are our staff doing? How are our students doing? Um, that's important to me. So can can you kind of bring us up to speed on 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 what's going on with 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 everyone?
Yes, uh Mayor Glover. I guess in terms of when you when you talk about how they are doing, uh well, as you know, we're still in a virtual instruction. We met uh last week to talk about the return. Um I've I've been asked by the board to come to, we have a meeting this Thursday to talk about a hybrid model of reopening. So that is something that we will talk about at that time. But one of the things, when you ask how our staff is doing, we launched a campaign uh here to help where we're focused on our staff and our students. It was just the 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 mental well-being of them. We want to make sure that they know that there were resources out there available for them because this is a, this is a difficult time that we're all involved with with this COVID and the pandemic. So we wanted to make sure that that we we reached out to them. You know, board members put this on us uh back in April, when we closed in uh March of last year. At April, they wanted us to make sure we had revenue. Well, we had information out there, resources available for the for our staff and students. So we did that. And just recently, it was ramped up where we pushed it out and you've probably seen it on social media outlets. You've seen it on uh we did ads with waving just to let everyone know the 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 importance of reaching out and making sure that you know if if you need additional support, that we're there. We've had uh a lot, the traffic to our webpage has has gone up tremendously since we launched this campaign, you know, more than what we've seen over the previous year within the last six weeks. So this campaign has really helped. So we're looking at the numbers now to see exactly how many staff and and students actually took advantage of this campaign. So, you know, I want to thank our communications department for making this happen and and just for the board to knowing the importance of this, to make this happen. So I think when you ask how they're doing, I think they're doing as well as they can be under the circumstances, sir. I'm very pleased and proud of the job that they're doing because it's not easy.
Yes, sir, and that's that's understood. The other question that I had, I know um back a year ago, sometime in March or April, when 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 things started looking like the children were not going to be returning, you and I had a conversation. I know we had talked to some providers of inter- internet services and other ways to connect our 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 children who might be in environments that don't have that kind of access. How are we doing in terms of getting the technology access and the tools uh equipment to our students? Are are we are we meeting that standard to 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 your to your expectation?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we we are. We we talk about that uh weekly. And we have every school in in Portsmouth Public School should have a device. Whether it's a Chromebook or or preschool through first grade may have an iPad. But they all have devices and then when we talk to, when we talked about the connectivity, you know, now we have um, we have the mobile hotspots that our s- our parents can basically sign up. So connectivity should not be an issue a- as well as a device. You know, we we got that area covered. You know, we were one of the first divisions to make sure that we took took care of that and because if you can imagine the push on devices when this whole pandemic began and our our IT department did an excellent job in getting that getting that information out and getting those laptops in. So we're pleased with that and and going forward, one of the things that we're doing, you know, we have uh monies that we can use toward that is that we know that this, the way we're teaching students now is so technology-based. When it's time for us to come back into the buildings, particularly for next school year, because we're ordering devices now. We want our students to be able to have the device at home and also have advice in the buildings as well. We realize our younger students are not, we don't expect them to be able to transport that device to and from school. So those that are that are that's not age appropriate, we want to make sure that they have a device at school and at home. You know, our older students, they can transport their devices back and forth. But we're back, we're we're purchasing uh additional laptops at this time to make sure that we stay abreast of everything as far as the technology goes. So we we we've done a great job and use those resources wisely to make that happen.
Well, that's that's incredible and and I'm very grateful for you and your team and your school board for all the emphasis that you have put in making sure that our teachers, our students, our parents are safe and healthy and they're continuing to learn. Um, if there are no other questions from our colleagues, I'd I'd like to, um, Councilmember Battle.
Yes. Uh, Dr. Bracy, some of us, if not all of us on the uh council uh are looking at the um the addition of extracurricular activities in the afternoon in certain elements of our population. And and they are designed to um amplify and to redirect our youth to education and its importance. And we'll be putting together possibly a program in the near, very near future. And we'll be calling upon the school board to assist us in this program. Uh so we'll probably respectfully request that you uh and the school board uh would uh assist us in the development of these programs. Thank you.
Miss, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Falk, just one one more question, um just for clarification and trying to get the impact of um the the budget at both the state and local level. Um, the the major revenue stream for uh public education uh is the basic aid. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now with that basic aid, that is composed of what SOQ and non-SOQ positions?
Uh, basic aid is is pri- primarily SOQ positions, sir. So it's whatever positions that are in the state standard of quality that they're funding, that is what makes up our basic aid.
Okay.
Yeah.
So so the state does not fund any non-SOQ positions?
No, sir.
Okay.
Everything is within the standards of quality.
Right, and so therefore, uh for those non-SOQ positions, many of those are support positions as well as your teaching positions.
Yes, sir, and 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 their support positions and a number of years ago in the downturn of oh eight, oh nine and ten, the state used to provide funding for support positions outside SOQ and they stopped doing that, which caused school divisions and localities that have to make up for that particular revenue source that the state stopped uh providing. And and there have been proposals in the general assembly to put that money back, but none have been successful in the last ten years.
Right, thank thank you for bringing that out because uh I thought at one point the state did fund uh those non-SOQ positions. And as you say, as a result of the recession, that was that was cut off. However, the state has actually recovered enough to continue that funding. I I say that because as we um wrestle with this budget and look to fund it based on the needs, um both uh council and citizens uh need to always keep in mind because over the years, citizens have come before council trying to compare uh Portsmouth SOQ funding to Virginia Beach, to Chesapeake. But what they fail to take into account is the issue of poverty. And when you start talking about a city that has the poverty level that we have and the state is not funding support positions, then we as a city just can't leave the children behind. And so I I want to point out as we wrestle with doing the right thing on this budget that we are dealing with an issue where the state has made significant cuts in non-SOQ support positions, which a school district with a high poverty such as Portsmouth suffers more than districts that do not have uh those type of challenges to deal with. And so um in a and also in addition to that, um we're dealing with um a historical issue of funding education here in the Commonwealth. And so um I hope that as we move towards uh funding the needs of the school that we keep that in mind about the fact that uh poverty level is high and we're dealing in a culture that has tried to suppress education of our children. And so uh I thank you for that information and I stand with my other colleagues who have expressed the strong support for uh supporting the needs of our school district. So I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker, and I would just add before we close, the 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 second part of that would be to all of us as elected representatives to continue to advocate and 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 press our state leaders at our delegate level and our and our and our and our senate level uh to make sure that um we hold our state government accountable for their portion that they should be paying towards public education. It's critically important uh that all of us work together to meet those needs. Vice Mayor Barnes.
I have a a question and a statement. Uh my question is, um, I know that um localities were giving money for for hazard pay. I'm not sure if the school system was giving money. If you guys can answer that for me, and if if they weren't giving money, do we have any money left over where we can give out for hazard pay in the city? Because um you know, I have children in the Portsmouth Public School System and I saw the wonderful job that they've done um through this pandemic and I definitely believe, given everything that they've gone through, that they deserve that. um through this pandemic and I definitely believe, given everything that they've gone through, that they deserve that.
All right. Um, the, Mr. Vice Mayor Barnes, when, when the monies have come from the federal government, they have come in what, what I'm just gonna call a block rant. Uh, they've given us amounts of money for specific items and then in other cases, it is a sum total that you may be able to use for other things, but it has to be approved in our case by the Vi- Virginia Department of Education. Those monies could have been used for a number of things. They never gave us money specifically for hazard pay only, if that makes sense. It was for any type of information or any type of project that would help us to recover from COVID or what those, what COVID caused us to have to do. Technology, cleanliness of facilities, uh instructional components and support, so on and so forth. Um, in, in, in our case, we did not deem it necessary to pay hazard pay and I'll explain why. Many of our employees in that timeframe from March to June, who were being paid, who were working. So those that were non-exempt and were working were also getting their hourly wage in addition to their regular pay. Because it wouldn't have been fair that one person was at home and was receiving their pay. And another person was coming to work every day, putting themselves at risk and not being paid. So many of our employees throughout this pandemic were paid their regular salary and the hourly rate, if they came into work, say food services, transportation, whoever, the non-exempt, those that punch a clock and are eligible for overtime. So in, in our mind, that was hazard pay. Because you got your regular salary and you were paid your hourly rate at the same time. Not many employees have told people that. I, I know they haven't. And that's what we did from that period, March to June. Uh, so we just wanna make sure that everybody understood that. Were there monies for hazard pay that many other school divisions did? They probably did. But I can tell you, they did not do the same thing that Portsmouth did for their employees. We didn't lay one employee off. We didn't, we didn't do a reduction of force as some of our other school division counterparts did. Told their employees, hey, five for unemployment, you, you can't come back to work until we tell you to come back. So we tried to take care of our employees the best way and the most fair way for all of the employees that work at Portsmouth Public School.
Uh, in my, in my statement, I appreciate that answer. Um, to piggyback off of what some, Mr. Dr. Whitaker said, um as far as the poverty rate, um and what we do know is school systems with high poverty normally haven't funded education in the past. Um, and with that being said, this, this city, this city council, everybody who ran, ran on funding education. And the mayor said we need to hold our state leaders accountable, but the citizens need to make sure that they hold this city council accountable. So we have a duty to make sure that we fund our education so we can cut into that poverty level and we can cut into that dropout rate because school systems that are fully funded, properly funded normally have lower rates when it comes to those. So I'm looking forward to working with this council to make sure that we fully fund Portsmouth Education finally for the first time. You on mute, Mayor?
Councilmember Woodard, thank you, sir. Letting me know, uh Vice Mayor Barnes.
All right, I got one more question.
No problem.
For Dr. Bracy, um, I'm, I just wanna make sure, are you guys receiving uh funding for y'all C I P? Are y'all receiving these, these monies as of now?
We, Mr. Woodard, I, I'll take that one. We receive the money that is approved in the city's C I P plan. So if you look back at the C I P plan, that is what we receive. We may give a proposal to the city, but it's all in what is approved in that C I P plan. So everything that has been approved in the C I P plan uh we have received with the exception of the middle school. The middle school was one where it was funded and then, and our, and our ID funded. So, but all the other programs that we had mentioned in this particular uh presentation were funded.
So I'm, I guess it's with the discretion of the council, is, is there any way for us to make sure that they get these money to allocate to something else if, if we're not working on the school right now? Is that for the boys?
That, that'll be part of our deliberations.
It only makes.
Councilmember Woodard, um, I, 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 I have Mr. Pace uh to, to, to respond to what you're asking, sir.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Councilmember Woodard. Um, as you probably know or, or may not know, um our budget team, in addition to our finance team, has put together a team that looks at C I P requests. Uh, the requests that we have right now with regard to things that are currently um funded, those things are being done. And here again, as uh Dr. Bracy and his team has said, once they submit their estimate of needs, we will look at those um things that they're requesting to see what funds available for C I P and make a determination as to how we go forward. The other thing to remember with C I P is that it's a five-year plan as opposed to a yearly plan. So once we get that request, we get that information, uh we will figure out how that works and then we'll, as we always do, ha- have conversations with the uh superintendent and his team to make sure that they are included in C I P.
All right. Thank you.
Thank, 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 thank you all and thank you, Mr. Pace. Um, on behalf of, of the Portsmouth City Council, I wanna thank um, that looks like school board member Costella Williams.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. I simply wanted to say that this meeting has been a breath of fresh air uh to sit and have conversations about our needs, our real needs and here feel like people are listening to us. And uh I really appreciate that and I thank you all for your commitment. Uh, one last thing, I would like to leave with uh our liaisons for the school and as far as the city. We have had an ongoing battle with our risk management funds. And as, as many of you all know, and I want to compliment uh, uh Mr. Pace, the city manager. Because since he became interim, it has been like a brand new day. And they did return the two point nine, I think, million or two point eight million in our risk management fund. And you know, the school sys, the school board has had a lot of discussion on uh how did we get back the risk management fund at the end of the year? And if the liaisons could research and look at the seventy-five-year-old ordinance that the former mayor pulled from somewhere, and if you all could do something with that. Because we did get uh Senator Lucas to get an opinion from the attorney general. And the opinion came back, he ruled in our favor, that the city cannot take employee insurance money and keep it. So if we could have that resolved where that does not become an issue at the end of each uh fiscal year, that would be great. That's one of my issues that I wanted to resolve while I was uh being appointed for the short term. So thank you all again. I, I, I've enjoyed this meeting. I've enjoyed the conversations and listening to, to you all talk. Like I said, it's a breath of fresh air. And I'm, I'm happy about this new city council. Thank you.
Thank you, school board member Costella Williams. We appreciate your comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. If there's no um objection from uh fellow council members, could we uh have Mr. Pace to um report back to us on the issue that um Ms. Williams, uh school board member Williams just uh raised so that uh we can um examine that to see what needs to be done to uh rectify the situation?
Absolutely, sir. We, 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 uh, Mr. Pace, you, you have that information?
Yes, I got it. And what I will do is confer with the city attorney since those funds were uh in their willhouse and we will get back to council for that update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pace.
Thank you, sir. Well, once again.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Pace needs to be uh commended as well uh for how he has worked with uh this superintendent in the schools. I've heard very positive uh reports and so I wanna thank Mr. Pace for uh staffing that climate.
I think that, I think that deserves a clap from everybody, so. Very good, very good. This has been a very productive night. And, and like I try to do when we have our meetings, if we could close out with some good news, um I would like to present something to our school. Um, I have a friend whose wife is a O B G Y N physician here in Chesapeake and he sent me this message and I wanted to share it with the members of the school board. He said to me, I have some great news to share with you regarding a magnificent accomplishment for an I C Norcom student. The lady that works for him, her son is a sixteen-year-old at I C Norcom High School and this young man was just accepted into Boston University School of Medicine, straight out of I C Norcom. And will be representing the entire city of Portsmouth. This does not happen very often and in fact, actually very rarely happens. Only an unusually intelligent, very focused student can achieve that. And he says that he thought that I would appreciate it, but more importantly, I thought that you all would appreciate it and the teachers and the parents that produce those kinda children in our public schools. Without any other questions, uh thank you again, Mr. Chairman, uh Superintendent Bracy and your staff, uh Vice Chair, all of you, uh we appreciate your time and this meeting is adjourned.
Good night.